Pardon, I'm here to testify in the United States of America and to the Republic of Olesias. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, welcome to Monday morning's meeting. So, did everybody get a chance to read the minutes?
Yes.
All right, can I get a motion to approve them? So, move back. First and second, all in favor?
All right.
Motion carries. Approve the home industry permit for Midwest Custom Resaw LLC, Chad.
So, you've got the application, give you a little bit of history. So, we had taken a call later in May that there was a sawmill that was being placed at a property. I did a drive by and then I made a call and we sent a letter to the individual, Jesse Gingrich, about his options in regards to the use of his land, whether he wanted to potentially apply to rezone or potentially apply for a home industry permit, which we're here for today, explain to, you know, him in regards to rezoning, classification of the land would change, and then all owners within 500 feet would be notified. And then the home industry permit, which we're here for today, we can claim in the letter that would not guarantee that the home industry permit would be authorized. So, after my site visit, I had visited with Jesse through some of the past and current concerns and issues. We had taken the original call from David Hill, which is a neighbor to the north. He had had complaints about, you know, the sawmill running six, seven days. It was loud, logs, concern about trucks, stated that the neighbors in the area didn't like it, both east and south. He had lived there for 38 years. Throughout the conversations with Jesse and him, I'd come to the conclusion that there were some issues, conflicts from day one between the two neighbors. There was reference of a beehive in the trees that Mr. Gingrich had driven on the property of Mr. Hill on day one, and then concerns about the shed being too close to the property. So, in regards to the process, I did talk to Dakota Drish as well. He's an individual who works for the DNR. We've written to him for a home industry permit for a gun sales business roughly a year ago. I spoke with him. I had put together some options for Jesse and the home industry permit that you would have seen in regards to how I felt we could try to get both individuals or the neighborhood and the applicant to get along. So, I proposed some recommendations on the conditions. I had stated an annual evaluation inspection prior to each renewal, which that's pretty common, no different than Andy Allen's barber shop had moved from Jamestown Avenue. Now, it's on 220th, I made another site visit, and then we renewed that. Limited 25 logs in the front yard at all times, turn 65 days a year. That's something that when I was on the site visit, that was about the number that I counted, somewhere between the number of 20 and 30, so I came up with that, just to give you an idea or reference of why that number was used. Exhaust the diesel engine through the sidewall of the building by July 31st, 2024. Frame in and steel the sliding door to the north of the building by August 31st, 2024. And again, I'll go through some of the stuff that Jesse came back with. Counter to these recommendations. Insulate the north and east wall of the building by September 30th of 2024. Insulate the balance of the entire building and attic by March 1st, 2025. And then agreement if the operation would grow to more than a part-time venture, the owner will pursue moving the facility to another location. So, in regards to some of the dates that were chosen, you know, through by conversations with Mr. Gingrich, I realized that, you know, it's not a full-time venture. He's trying to get started. Some of these improvements would take dollars and cents and time. He's going to do it by himself, you know, he would have to have the time to do it above and beyond his full-time job, and then also have the monetary funds to make those improvements. As I took some more calls, talked to Mr. Hill, he did state through a phone conversation that it had been better since my first site visit, as far as the noise goes. Mr. Drish, although concerned with some of the traffic on the road, did like that I was putting together some recommendations and liked the process in which we were going about trying to ask some conditions on the potential. Jesse did send in a counter. So, one of the recommendations was 25 logs in the front yard. He had countered 50. Frame in the door to the north, he would like to leave it as is. The reason why I had proposed that, if you've been on site or near the property, as the door is open to the north, that building sits there at an angle, and there's an opening in the trees that would go towards Mr. Hill's property. And I think a lot of that, potentially on the time of the year, the number of leaves that are on the trees could funnel some of that noise. But I do believe that some of the insulation, the exhaust and the diesel engine and that vibrating and echoing off the steel building and some insulation could help a lot of that. As far as insulation on the northeast by September 30th, which is my recommendation, Jesse countered it December 31st, 2024, so basically giving him three more months to do that. And then insulating the balance of the building by March 1st, 2025. He would prefer that that was November 1st, 2025. So, I know that the applicant is here. I did text message and have an exchange with Dakota Drish, and then I did also email Mr. Hill to tell him about this meeting as well. Again, I would recommend the, I'm about trying to get people to get along. I would try to recommend the home industry permit to try to be tested for a year, analyze it, review it, but I would recommend the items that I place for the home industry permit to be. So, Mr. Hill over today, too?
I don't believe he's here. Okay, I made, I made two site visits up there to the property. And I, Jesse started up the sawmill and operated it while I was there. I witnessed a cut and stuff from the noise and stuff standing out to the south, kind of over towards Dakota's property. And then he made another cut when I was standing behind the building to the north. And it hadn't given me enough time to actually drive up the road and go into Miller's driveway right there. And got out and listened to the cut when I was sitting in Miller's driveway, which would then I was, we had that barrier of the timber then. I didn't think it was extremely, a lot of decibel, high decimal noise or anything that was irritating in my mind at that time. But I came back then and I talked to Jesse some more about it and I, or that was on the engine. I, he told me it was 120 horsepower engine, I think he said it was on there. Is that correct, Jesse? And it seemed like a very small muffler compared to tractors, what they have and stuff. So, his father runs a engine repair shop and stuff like that. So, I recommended him to, in that time, he already had the flexible tubing exhausting out to the southeast corner of the building. So, he got a muffler from his father and it was quite a bit larger, had more baffling in it and stuff. And he called me up then, I think it was Friday or Saturday, and said that he had that different muffler installed. So, I went up there then Saturday afternoon and he started the sawmill up and I did the same process again. And the exhaust noise was quite lowered. I mean, I didn't have a decimal meter with me or anything like that, but I noticed quite a difference by putting that other muffler there. And to me, it wasn't a large irritating noise. The only time is when you hear the biggest bark, maybe what I recall from the engine, when you have a surge is when he was cycling, you know, it would take a little more horsepower. The bell would open up and then you'd hear it. But then when he was actually into the cut, it was a smooth engine. I mean, it wasn't very, any of the engine noise. So, I felt it was very limited noise from this whole operation. And I couldn't really tell, you could tell it was probably a saw blade operating, but when I was over there setting in the driveway to the north, but I think that timber there is, actually increases a lot of buffer. And I understand, you know, when you've got leaves are off and the foliage is off, it's going to have some change there, but. And this is a young family and he's trying to make a living. And he feels this way and he's got an investment there with the bandsaw operation and stuff like that. And I think the reason he, Jesse wants it, and Jesse, if I'm speaking wrong here, just voice up. You know, he's trying to do these things that the insulating and stuff is he's got money coming in so he don't have to go out and work on, work on getting a loan or something to insulate that building or anything like that. So, I think he wants these increased timeframes to allow him to be able to do that. And he said that he was going to dress up the front there a little bit better for the logs to be stacked more neatly out there and stuff like that. And he feels the way the cycling that he has coming in for the logs, he would be, it would help his operation a lot to move when people are hauling these logs in if he could go to a 50 log inventory.
First, I had proposed 25, and I just come up with that number from the day I was there. I thought it was between 20 and 30 as I counted and walked the property. That is one concern though aesthetically from both the neighbors, Dakota and Mr. Hill, regards to seeing the property a certain way for so long and now it's this certain thing, so.
And when we got, I look at this, most of these logs are coming off of farms and stuff, kind of look at it as an hay product, you know? And I, and I think it's a needed service out there in our county. I quote, asking his cost and prices on when he just custom cuts and stuff, and it's really low. And I, he had a horse trailer there that a guy brought in. He was cutting logs to put a new floor in the horse trailer. Another individual had some of the used eye line foals there that he was cutting up and I asked what that was being used for. And he said, a guy is redoing the, his hay racks. So, we've got that treated lumber, so it's, it's a, a lot of this stuff is going for ag use that he's sawing up, cutting and stuff for ag constructions and stuff like that. So, I think it's a needed business in our county. So, I think Jesse's counter with these requests of giving him a little bit longer on this insulating and stuff and the 50 logs is not a good reason. And I would just like to be able to see him operate his business and make a living for his family and provide a needed service in our county.
Is, is there an area on the property that would be more out of sight that they could use for logs to be stacked or is it an accessibility issue?
So, I would state that, I give you the. So, this is the property here going north. This is the building in question.
Okay.
This is where the logs are currently. They could potentially be here, but you've got a tight window.
And are those trees that are right in front there or bushes or?
Yeah, so here, here you've got, thanks Amber. So, here's currently where the logs are being placed, Dakota Drish, Mr. Hill's property. This is the building that the operations are being placed in. That'd be a pretty tight, in my opinion, pretty tight window to, you know, back a semi or some type of a log straight truck in there to park them in the back. But he does have the acreage and square footage to store them somewhere.
I understand not wanting to look at a stack of logs across from your property. I mean, that does kind of devalue the other properties around it, too.
I think Dakota, would you, my speaking, I know you're probably here to listen.
Public hearing at 9:15 and it's 9:16. So, we're going to have to put this on hold to do the public hearings.
Thank you. All right.
Sorry about that, we got a public hearing at 9:00.
Okay, and. The hearing is. The Chris Roberts, plenty of. I took a shower, John, don't worry. But then I went in the garden.
You need to open the public hearing or anything like that?
Yeah, and I have a motion to open the public hearing.
So, move.
Yeah, first.
Second.
Second. All in favor? Public hearing's opened.
Okay, so this is for a case, season zebra 2024-009, request by Chris Roberts to rezon four acres, plus or minus from A1 agricultural to A2 agricultural. The owner would like to allow for a new parcel creation and a new dwelling that will allow for chickens and horses per zoning ordinance 20-01. So, as we're looking at where this is, it's right to the east of Jessup. It is within a two mile radius. As you know, from the past, any of the cities in question don't have any say in the rezoning process but any type of minor plat or subdivision moving forward, which just would have, the city of Jessup would have some say in the matter and have the ability to review that, you know, move on to the area. So, Mr. Roberts is in the blue designated area. He owns both the blue and the green currently. He's looking to parcel off his current dwelling and then sell the remainder of the two acres to the east with the pond, some of the timber, and then some of the open land. And again, with moving from the A1 to the A2, we've been using this zoning district to allow residents to have animals. Our current zoning ordinance with all the residential districts do not allow animals, so that's why we're supposed to go to the A2. We had taken a few calls in regards to the area. One neighbor was concerned on how this rezoning would potentially affect property taxes, which it would not. We had some calls in regards from the bells to the east, which is this property, on a potential new driveway, potential drainage issues from the creek. There was a lot of conversation in and around the zoning commission and the, those involved that were in attendance about some past damming, some of the improvements that's been made in that creek and around the pond to deter that. Any type of driveway, obviously, moving forward, that you can render by Phil and Brian, if you're due. But at the end, I believe that there was some settling on the concerns from the bells in regards to potentially an exchange of some land and be able to have some control of that property. Where that is, I'm not sure. But in regards to, if you want to move forward, CSR isn't really an issue because it's already taken out of production. It's already not been in production. In regards to CSR level, you can see 67 is the CSR. You've got some 25. Anytime it's darker, it is the better of land. But again, it's not the till, no concerns from my aspect there. You have a larger aerial imagery of the city. So, there you can tell how close it is to the city of Jessup. You could see the linear line of growth by the city. Obviously, that's going to probably continue to go east. We also know that on 220th or Old Highway 20, Mike Shears has a development that is starting, and then a new house has been placed out there and I anticipate that to continue to grow. So, that's not too far from here. But again, as far as the concerns from the public, concerns from the zoning commission, didn't have any concerns on CSR, didn't have any real concerns on the split. There was a concern, you know, concern and a restriction in regards to the restriction on the number of animals. I'm going to give you this just for reference moving forward. So, in our past ordinance, 2020, before 2020, we always had references in regards to the number of animals as far as their size description compared to the number of acres and would give us some guidance. So, with the new 2020 ordinance, there is no real guidance. So, this is something that the P&amp;Z commission, most of them being farm-related individuals, converse and give a good recommendation in regards to how many animals they would like to put a restriction or condition on. So, there was a motion by Weir with the restriction of six large animals and then also the base flood elevation requirements by the zoning administrator to confirm that any structure built on that property, moving forward, you have the creek in the area. And again, depending on the mortgage company and the underwriter, some of those individuals are okay with if a structure is placed outside of the actual floodplain, they're okay with me authorizing that. Some of the underwriters want zoning administrator, even if it crosses the corner of the lot, to have a base flood elevation shot by a certified engineer before I can confirm if that structure can be erected there. And what that does is that confirmation basically saves the future owners from not having to pay any type of prop, well, floodplain insurance.
Chad?
Yep.
This creek is what feeds that pond, is that what that is?
I would say yes. I mean, obviously you have.
So, there'd be an outlet on that also, which follows that timber line or where's it go?
You know, so here's the entire path. You get the ditch, obviously, there's probably a culvert underneath there.
Right.
And then there's your path.
Okay.
It's basically a field, filled.
Like a pension pond type of thing.
You can see the floodplain there in regards to the blue and the red. Again, like I said, some companies will allow me as a zoning administrator to permit a structure that's outside of that blue and red. Others, since there's, it's on the potential new lot, they want a surveying company like Crawford's or Teacup, Fairgram, somebody to come in and shoot an elevation. And our ordinance states that base flood elevation, let's say that's 900, the first forming level has to be 901. And so that allows, but back to the P&amp;Z commission, they did unanimously approve with the restriction of six large animals and then the base flood elevation confirmed by myself, it's, if it's required by the mortgage company. And again, that was carried with a vote of 80. We had one member that was absent, I'd even.
Are the neighbors, danger, it's going to be animals there. Are the neighbors all familiar with the Iowa fence law?
I can't speak for them, but, you know, so commonly when we forward that, any concern like that to the township trustees. If there's a decorative fence per se, we try to stay and require, recommend. We don't have anything in our ordinance, but we try to push them in the area of whatever the city of Independence is, or in this case, we research what the city of Jessup is, and we try to keep any type of decorative fence three feet off the property line so that when you're weed trimming, bush mowing, whatever, you're still on your property. Because we would love to have all our neighbors get along, but as we find out often, they do not. So, that's what we recommend. But as far as the fence laws, we push that to the township trustees, man, they're the ones that know that.
I know there's been efforts to change.
We have a lot of.
Defensive, fencing laws, but still got the right hand to hold on that, so.
We have our next public hearing at 9:25.
And I know that the applicant could not be here today because he's a.
Do you have anything else?
I'd make a motion to approve.
Close public.
Or we got a close public hearing.
And a motion to close the public hearing?
Second.
First and second, all in favor?
All right. I'd make a motion to approve the rezoning request.
With the conditions?
With the conditions specified.
You got a first, we have a second?
Second.
First, second, all in favor?
All right.
Motion carries. All right.
You just want to get that to us, we'll get Chris to do the signing, and then we'll get that to you.
Motion to open up the next public hearing, which is Dan Hoover.
I'd make a motion to open that.
Second.
First and second, all in favor?
All right.
All right, all right, let's go on to Dan Hoover.
So, approval is for case of season zebra 2024-007, request by Dan Hoover to rezon four acres plus or minus for A1 agricultural, A2 agricultural. Then he's looking to solve a few acres in this location that are low CSR, which follows the Buchanan County subdivision ordinance guidelines. There will be two, two acre lots established within a four lot major subdivision process. So, there was two lots that were rezoned and self-divided here not too long ago. Dan, Dan was in looking to potentially grow the Northland School District. He does have four CSR. It is long a hard surfaced road. His property is just to the west, as you can see on the aerial. The two purple were already rezoned and processed in 2023, if you're by that. He has them marketed, I believe one's already sold, and he has them planted to alfalfa, and then he has a nice strip around the property mode so that potential future buyers can see what areas for sale. In regards to the next two, the zoning commission was in favor of the request. Obviously, it meets all CSR guidelines. It's long paved road. As far as moving from three to four, it then follows another subdivision guideline, and it would be another process, which his surveyor has already forwarded a lot of that paperwork as of last Thursday and Friday. So, we would, if the rezoning passes through you, we would move into that next process. That would be reviewed by the P&amp;Z commission and then come back in front of you. So, anytime it's at over three, it would go into that four lot. So, we've not taken any calls or against. And again, he's stated he's trying to generate some interest in some families to live in the Northland School District. No concerns from me. There is already an established driveway here, obviously, and then one right across here in regards to the other driveways. A lot of the times on high traffic roads, paved roads within the county, the county engineer, Phil Pangman, will recommend that the driveway is shared rather than having four. There's a new separation distance that we talk about often.
What is that separation distance?
It used to be 300, now I believe it's 400 feet.
Okay.
That might be something we checked.
Well, right.
But supported by our office, no concerns. Dan is here to answer any questions.
Oh, it is low CSR ground and that's almost right there.
What a flip.
Probably close to him, Sandbar's, or Sandbar's really good.
So, again, lighter is the worst. And as you move to the east, the red is the better. But in the, this area, we're talking about 21, that's 60. See, it's pretty light.
Yeah.
I have no questions about it. I think it's a. It's a gold, as far as I'm concerned. There's nothing else from the public that I'll make a motion closing in.
I second the motion.
First and second, close public hearing. All in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Motion carries.
And I'll go ahead, and there's no conditions that's been. And I'll go ahead and there's no conditions that's been put upon this, whatever by the P and Z, correct?
Correct.
Okay, I'll make the motion. Then we go ahead and approve this request.
Second.
First, I got a second, all in favor?
Alright.
And motion carries.
Thanks. We've, we got your entire pa- packet there on Thursday and Friday. We'll review that and if we need anything else, we'll be in. Yeah, yeah.
It's Friday, part of the holiday.
Good luck with that.
You know, I am kids. Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, let's go back up to the top for approval of the monthly reports, quarterly reports, that stuff. See if we can get through that.
Okay. Improve monthly report for the recorder's office in the amount of nine thousand eight hundred seventy seven dollars and nine cents.
Will you approve?
Second.
First and second, all in favor?
Alright.
Approve the quarterly report from the auditor's office for forty one thousand one hundred five dollars and fifty cents.
Second.
First and second, all in favor?
Alright.
I approve the monthly employee health trust report.
Second.
First and second, all in favor?
Alright.
Motion carries. Approve fireworks permit for Andrew Millard.
I don't review that. Look like everything's in place uh for the requirements on that ordinance. So I make a motion that we approve that permit.
I'll second that.
A first and a second, all in favor?
Alright.
Motion carries. Alright, we're still.
We're in itself.
We can do the manure plans and Julie Davidson said she needed two minutes.
Okay. Please send for help the following newer management plans. Jay Dolan Finisher, Middlefield Township, section twenty five. Michael Site, Buffalo Township, section seven, Oswald Finisher, Byron, Byron Township, section twenty. Port Shuck Hill three, Site B, Saint Township, section twenty. Dan Toma, Jefferson Township, section four.
Motion placed on file.
Second.
The first and second, all in favor?
Alright.
Bye Julie.
Bye.
If you lose but
So, um, we have a couple requests to, for amending the fiscal year twenty five budget. I have the amended amount off to the right. Um, the sheriff's department did, was not able to get the drop boxes purchased. They were budgeted in twenty four, so nothing was spent in fiscal year twenty four for those. We did increase the amount. They would like to put them in Winthrop Fairbank at the Public Health Building. My goodness, my concrete spelled wrong. Um, and then put one, replace the one out in front of the courthouse because it's getting rusted. And so instead of trying to fix that one up, they want to replace it. The one at Public Health might just be an extra one or they might actually mount it. So that, and then I added um outreach and awareness activities, a thousand dollars, added that to the budget. Um, we want to do a booth at the fair, which is fifty dollars. We didn't have it budgeted anywhere. Um, and we thought there might be other things, like if we could get T-shirts for people that are working, not this year at the fair, but other outreach activities to have that dollar amount to give us a little bit of flexibility. So those are the two requests that we have. Griffin's here too, if we have any questions.
Hi Griffin.
I have more questions on the asked. It's uh the money's there to be used and we need to put it to use. That's what's, that's what's expected of us to do. So uh I make, go ahead and I'll make a motion to approve those amendments.
I'd second that.
A first and a second, all in favor?
I believe you said it's gonna be in Winthrop, Fairbank, Boardhouse and Reynolds.
Uh, Public Health.
Okay.
Yeah. And that one might just be there to kind of as an extra and see if there's other places to put it or it might actually be mounted. So alright, thank you.
Okay, thanks.
Minute, getting closer. Alright, can I have a motion to open up the public hearing for the Willis Waffen estate?
Make that motion?
Second.
Okay, so
Sorry.
Sorry about that.
Moving.
This is for approval of cases, these in Zebra twenty four zero one zero, request by Willis Waffen. Estate to rezon eleven point seven acres plus or minus from A one agricultural, A two agricultural. This farmstead is being split to an open state due to an open estate. This farmstead split is also larger than what the zoning administrator can allow without the approval of the planning zoning commission and the board of supervisors. So again, we had adopted a couple of years ago my ability to interpret what a farmstead split is without any acres per se being included. That's why we're in front of this for today. So as far as where this is located, city of Independence, highway one fifty, there to the uh east of one fifty. Um, this came in front of us, we'll take air imagery. Um, we had taken several calls from the, the realtor who's representing the uh trust, which is Travis Smock. And they had looked at several ways to potentially split the uh farm uh with some of the acres to the south and then potentially split the acres to the north and then just leave the farmstead itself. They come up with this uh proposed um split. And uh this would include, you know, eight to nine acres till the land included in that um farmstead split. As far as uh concerns, you can see that uh there's a couple accessory structures, silos here to the uh south, um, that the potential buyer, uh, which is here, Mr. Decker, has concern on how close they are to the property line. He'd like to see those a little bit further. Um, as far as interpretation, they're interpreted as an accessory structure. So within our ordinance, um an accessory structure with our, in twenty twenty, uh, we try to get them to be ten feet, but there is some uh fine print that can allow accessory structures on the side and the rear to be as close as four feet. The proposed survey that we did receive, um, the silos are currently eighteen point eight feet. So um it is in compliance um with our ordinance, what's recommended. Um, and again, this is further than commonly we see, you know, farm ag exemption. They can go right up to the property line if they'd like. Um, so those being eighteen eight four, I'll let Mr. Decker uh, you know, um, express his concerns, but there is obviously a soil or a drainage area that you will see there on the mapping. Um, and again, I think that there was potential work with some tiling or some concerns there from him and why he wanted that area to have some flexibility on drainage and some type of you know, manipulation of the land to feather it that way that's out.
These concrete stave silos, all three of them.
Correct.
Well, the thing about that, and if it comes to maybe taking them down in the future or something like that, that can always be done. So they would fall to the north. There's ways of doing that, if they were taken down, so they wouldn't be falling onto the joint property.
Um, also the potential buyer of, of farmstead and then it's con- concern and discussion in regards to the size of equipment these days in the small parcel of eight to nine acres there to the north. Um, the potential new buyer um is uh not concerned, says he's farms a lot of small parcels like that. And again, um, there are those around the county. Um, some farmers like them or they're doing them, some are not. Well, that was uh concerned. Um, as far as uh, you know, the CSR. With uh the CSR, obviously darker colors, um, are higher CSR and and the pink, pinkish is eighty, and then the darker color is eighty six. Um, there is no plans to uh take that land to the north out of production. Um, and then the restriction with the motion from the P and Z Commission did restrict this parcel um of the eleven point seven acres plus or minus to only have one single family dwelling moving forward. So if that corner ever wanted to be used for something else, they would have to come in front of the county to get authorization for that. But in regards to the uh motion with that restriction, it was supported and carried with a whole eight to zero. And there are some individuals in the audience that may have some comments.
Maybe like speak on it?
So right now, there's no reason to change driveway or nothing like that.
So they have, they have access, you know, here with farm buildings to be able to get to there. If they wanted an ag driveway on that road. I mean, Brian gives those up pretty, pretty
County has already been an ag drive to the north so they can get the equipment in.
Okay. You have anything else that you would like to say about this or?
Um, you know, I think it, I guess my mind's fairly straightforward. You know, we've got a acreage site owner that wants to purchase it and they've restricted it to one single family home. Um, he's going to uh farm that property. He's got a small farming operation himself. We will split that off and sell the farmland separately to another direct neighbor. So cut out. Open any question you guys might have, but I think it's fairly straightforward in my mind.
Well, because of the high, higher CSR, I'm uh, I'd like to hear that that it's gonna be kept in ag production, so.
Yeah, that's absolutely mentioned.
There's no plan for livestock or anything on this, this point. And if they decide to go with livestock, would they have to apply back for?
No, so any, any A two um zoning district um interpretation, any A one is allowed in that. So again, not that a hog confinement is gonna go there, but we have hog confinements on five acres or less. Um, so in the A two district, anything allowed in the A one district is also allowed in the A two district. And again, uh, Mike Rowden said to make the comment about restrictions, anything in around twelve acres, we're not, they're not gonna look at putting restrictions up there. It's usually when it's close proximity to the uh a city or if it's, you know, two or three acres, then they look at potential restriction.
Any other comments?
Just, just a comment that, no. Reason I was concerned on the spacing is to, you have some background experience on the property because Fallow had this one time and we purchased the adjacent ground twenty something years ago. And now there's a lot of, he had a lot of cattle and there's a lot of concrete in here. And the water flows downhill and that was the reason this little hook is in here because of a manure in the water flow in that direction. And, and I was concerned on how close it was to that silos because we wanted to try to be able to do some improvements. There's nothing wrong with the land. It's been farmed for many years and that hasn't been a problem. Uh, Fallow just stayed out of that area after a heavy rain. So, and um, I think that's a workable situation there where we can put in an inlet, pick up the water that comes down through the through the yard off of the concrete. Cause there's about a half acre concrete in there. And truly, he could put a lot of cattle in there, but I don't. We did talk about it and I can't limit the number of cattle. And I'm not saying we want to limit it, but just trying to look at the what-if situation. And now I think it's manageable with the attitudes that we have to be on the future side of that.
Thank you. Any other comments? I make the motion to close the public hearing.
I'll second.
First and second, all in favor?
Alright.
I public hearing is closed.
I'll make a motion that we approve with your question to continue this with one not, still one dwelling. With the, with that condition.
Okay.
I'd second that.
First and second, all in favor?
Alright.
Hi.
Motion carries. Next public hearing is
Okay.
Travis.
At nine fifty.
Do you have the ability to sign if that, or do you, you uh starts to the
Eighteen six minute.
We have to get that signed for the restriction of one single family dwelling. Who has that authorization? Okay, yeah.
Brian, can you say what you need to say in about six minutes?
Six. Possibly. Start out.
First, first one is the agreement with Kowski.
Yes, okay. Let me step up there and I'll get her on the phone. And basically what the city of Kowski wants is um what we've got with the city of Independence.
With no revisions to the next one, correct?
Um, well, a couple because they have, Independence has about four bridges, Kowski has one bridge.
Right.
For Chicago. And then there was uh no reason to tap it off at twenty five hundred dollars. So we just dropped things. When we retype it, we drop the cap on that. And I'm trying to get my phone to recent.
Does the county attorney review this twenty eighty agreement or this?
The, the one with the city of Independence.
This is the city of Kowski.
Okay, it should be basically, hello Sarah, this is Brian and I'm in the boardroom and we're in session right now. And um, the question comes, it's virtually identical agreement. Did you want to run it by the county attorney's office again for?
It's virtually the same.
Can you provide me a copy of that? We've got that council meeting tonight. Will, I've got it on the agenda for tonight's council meeting. And either they can approve it tonight or if they want to send it to the attorney for review, otherwise they'll approve it tonight or, you know.
Yeah, yeah. And the boards, I'm being asked to. And I'm asking the board whether they want it run by the county attorney's office too, even though it's virtually the, no problem, sir.
It needs to be.
You can approve it with with the
Condition. Okay, what I'm hearing is they're gonna prove it. Subject to approval by the county attorney, here's what the discussion is.
I don't.
Wait. Have a motion?
I'd make a motion to approve the twenty eighty subject to the county attorney's authorization.
Second.
First and second, all in favor?
Alright.
Right.
Motion carries.
Okay, they've approved it, subject to the county attorney's office approving it. So I'll give both these to Chris and, or I can run them up there however she wants to handle it.
I emailed it to him this morning at eight thirty when I received it.
Okay, thank you and we'll let you go then.
Yeah, bye.
Thank you, Brian. Thank you.
Bye. Uh, the other thing I had on there is uh a couple of years ago, we applied for improvements on the railroad crossing south of Fairbank North, north of Jessup there over the Illinois Central. And I got a email in from the DOT saying, Brian, you want to continue yet? I'm saying it was bad two years ago. It hasn't
They just don't magically get better, do they?
No. Yeah, I said yes, but I thought maybe I should run that by the board too. Uh, the timeframe that they are looking at is assuming it gets approved by the DOT commission this fall. They're really looking in twenty twenty six to start the project. And my experience has been, it's been a year after that before I ever see the bill from it. Now, what part of the bill do I get? I get twenty percent of the bill. Yeah, what they had provided me with a cost estimate was seventy thousand and I'm saying that's way low. Because even the latest ones we've done was closer to that hundred and twenty thousand. And
And by the time they get to in twenty twenty six?
Yeah.
I didn't
Yeah. So I, do I need anything, I would say concurrents. If you want me to tell the DOT, no, we don't want to go with that, I would, but that
We won't. How long is it normally shut the highway down?
They work under two. Ah. It's just a matter of hours is generally the catch. I was gonna say they work under traffic is what I'm thinking. But when we did this golf course boulevard lately, we did Nathan Bethel and the guys are saying, yeah, you just did Nathan Bethel a couple of years ago, but still bad again. Yeah, one fifty is the next thing I heard from Mike on voice. Yep. It doesn't happen fast. Like I said, it was twenty twenty two. We, we actually filled out the paperwork applying.
I'd make a motion to proceed DOT. I'll get that done.
First and second, all in favor?
Alright.
She carries, we're good to go.
Thank you.
Thank you.
If you have some fun things to you, when you're all done, could you give me a call, please? Thank you.
Hey, we're almost on track again. In fact, we are.
Make a motion, we'll open public hearing for zoning requests that Doug and Neil Rasmun.
The first? I have second. I have first and second, all in favor?
Alright.
She carries.
Yeah, this is for a case.
Yeah, this is for a case. Two volt four uh Zebra twenty point four zero one one. If I needle my graph, the result only acres plus or minus like A one agricultural to A two agricultural. The applicants would like to create ten little lots total along two hundred twentieth street and Busque and Dag Boulevard. Each lot would consist of roughly two acres. So as you uh. So we have the city of Independence, then you have fine subdivision as you're going um east toward Winthrop. Uh, we're talking about just past the intersection of Kostskeden Dag Boulevard and Old Highway twenty. We give you a little bit of history, um Rathman's were in um our office researching this potential farm. For CSR levels and potential growth, some residential lots. Um, and looking what was their best um approach to go about it. Um, we talked about size of lots, talked about zoning districts and what could be allowed and again. Um, you notice um this would be with two acres would be rezoned to the A two district potentially. Um, with your authorization to allow some animals, and again, we're in the. You know, so-called city of independence, but it's really not the city limits, fine addition obviously is county. Um, again, along there, we have rezoned several residential lots. In the past, we've had Dick and Larry playing, you had Steve Bennerman, um and then recently we had split and split this. Um, lot into two of to allow a secondary dwelling there by Mr. Gator be built. And uh this would continue that for old cross the road. Um, you have Stu Allen's place that's currently for sale, Tim Downey owns that one and then Mike Ross, Mike Ross, Mike Rosper owns that. MJR Construction, most people know him as, I did take a few calls um prior to the P and Z Commission from Mike Rosberg. You know, he had uh relayed that, you know, he's been in the country, would like to stay in the country, et cetera, Tim Downey, you know, inquiry. From across the road, just sort of the details, Keith Downey had called in and 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 talked to me. Um, in person once before, just interested in what what I thought on the potential uh. Application itself and then land the gator, who obviously uh is in the area as well, so. Um, in regards to uh the CSR levels, we always talk about that, um and again, I had one thing that as we move forward. One of the things that the P and Z body did come up with was we'll see with the CSR map. That better CSRs are back there, they did come with a condition for me to propose, which I had forwarded to you last week. On more of a longer um lot width um running. Along the Kostweaken Dag Boulevard to basically stay with taking lesser CSR soils out of production. If you want to move forward in the CSR.
There that um parcels there on, but that's. Right there before you get to the overpass, correct, and that's where them trees and shrubs had been removed just recently this spring.
The the overpass is clear down here, this would be the. We have the cemetery. And part of the reason was, we looked at the CSR levels and then obviously this buffer of those tree line was also. Part of the interest, as you can see, the northern potential uh. Eight lots across two hundred twentieth street uh would be roughly three hundred by three hundred sixty eight. Uh, one thing that I did bring up at the P and Z Commission. Is there is a waterway that would go right through here, so how that would be worked into the lot, that would be something that the uh. Potential surveyor engineer and the owners would uh look at uh how they would work that in. And then the other two down there would be similar in size, but again, um we can move forward and take a look at. The CSR levels in regards to um the new proposal, you have that anger with the two lots to the. So this is what I had sent to you last week, so potentially, this is what the P and Z body delegated me to to work up a. Potential proposed lot size, this would be four acres, two lots, it'd be five hundred and sixty roughly. Um, obviously, that a diagonal, north to south, and at three hundred and ten feet west to east. I know that Neil Rathman was in my office a couple of times. And said that a potential buyer would prefer to have that lot deeper, they like the sense of having them. Trees as a buffer rather than going this way, but again, our. Comprehensive plan of our uh guidelines for zoning ordinance in the P and Z Commission consistently are. Following that CSR guideline, so that's why we come up with that proposal. And again, that's something that you could potentially um discuss, I did, uh, we have the. So when I I apologize and maybe Neil and Doug have these uh color. They could help you because when I scanned it in, they went to black and white, I followed up. And these are talking about the two lots that are on Kostweaken Dag Boulevard. Um, and in regards to their yield maps.
I've got like three. Years of data. For that particular corner, which is all red, which is not real good. Corn and soybean.
Okay, so that is not good, the green is good.
Yeah. Is there a possibility of taking the the newest lot and turning it like you suggested, but leave the the southern lot? The same or? Right.
You're talking about tends to turn this one like.
Or would that make it unworkable to farm it? Absolutely. That's just a thought. But we thought it wouldn't be too much of a hassle that the maybe the actual CSR lines were off just a little bit, which.
It doesn't like it.
And if you uh were to go by this spring, could have told exactly where. The really good ground and really bad ground was.
We have a breakdown in your pack and we can also bring it up too, just to give you an idea going east to west. Sixty CSR, then it's forty, then it's twenty seven, then it's sixty seven, and then this has a small leg that goes up in there that's eighty. And then we're, this light ground here is twenty seven, this is thirty eight, and this is sixty seven and seventy six. So that's the reason why the P and D body discussed that.
So pretty much you'd be getting out seventy six by the. Creating more fronty.
The the longer lot would go up near um and take most of that thirty eight if if not a little bit more.
I wonder if the trees being right along there also have something to do with it?
They suck moisture. But the people that were kind of interested in those lots wanted a deeper lot rather than be right along the highway. So that's why I was brought you those maps, you could tell that. We could still make them that deep and be. Kind of within the guidelines of this corn suitability rating. I can see from respective buyer.
Oh, just by looking at that map, I don't know what percentage of the seventy six in that north. Lot, it looks like it maybe. Takes a third at the very best. So if you look at the overall average, you're gonna be well below fifty five.
It really doesn't like soybeans.
No.
And then I will just add as one in discussion, just so you know the actual. Motion that was given by the P and Z Commission, the coal, the uh the motion. Um, with the restriction last ninety ten, our term for there is more frontage to the road. Zoning at the zoning administrative discretion on the lot size, that's what I proposed to you that we're discussing today. Ultimately, it's up to you, you three, the minor plat or the major subdivision will be followed, so in the original discussion. I went through with uh Rathman's on how we could potentially handle it like Dan Hoover is. Where it be maybe first edition, second edition, uh we could use the minor plat process if you only sell one or two at the beginning. And then once it gets past that three, it would have to go through the major subdivision process. Um, and then there was also discussion to limit to uh. Six cow calf pairs or two large animals was also attached. Um, and then after the P and Z Commission, I did take a call from um Tim Donley, you know, he has four sheep, so. And uh just wanted to know if instead of, you know, cow calf pairs, if that could be. Horse pairs and then I said that would be interpreted the same.
The pair numbers, how many?
Six. So we're considering the one in the diagonal first and I'm gonna talk about the one up on. E twenty two.
I think they're on the same thing. It's almost same.
I know, I'm, we're just kind of, we're all focused on the one down there on the dig. My concern on the one on the highway is how many driveways are in that short amount of distance? And I'm thinking of a safety issue, the limit for.
Yeah, so what that would be handled like would be just like the T Meyer subdivision. Just called Hunter's Ridge, is that correct, to the west, and so every. Or or Randy Blinn subdivision out on Golf Course Boulevard, so every two lots had shared driveway and they'd come up in and they would fly. And then if you if you notice, that's why. I had state uh stated that the size would be roughly three hundred by uh three sixty eight. So roughly every three hundred feet would be a driveway, ultimately that would have to be authorized by Brian. Right.
I think it's great that it's gonna be a hard surface road, great access, but as busy as that corner is. And with all those driveways, I think they're asking for a safety issue, that would be my concern.
So you're gonna wind up basically the way that designed, there would be basically what, four or five ways or?
The traffic count, just so you, everybody knows, I've been old highway twenty or two hundred twentieth, it's fifteen hundred and forty vehicles per day. Um, please, Busque and Dag Boulevard, it's seven hundred and ninety vehicles per day. Uh, give you an idea, the uh busiest road in the county has consistently been Benson Shady going out of Jessup. And that that range is anywhere from twenty two hundred to twenty six hundred vehicles per day.
That waterway is a concern of mine to make sure that I mean that happy worked out with surveyor because. It's not good if any construction takes place where you're blocking the flow of the water and it starts affecting the neighbors' property, you know. Cost of boundary.
No, I, what I think is that uh we've got tile running underneath there right now, underneath the waterway. So you could basically. Divide it up, not have the wa, I mean, it really doesn't produce, throw that much water down the ditch. Because the two tile lines going down that we hooked up. Underground when they redid the highway.
And what was the? They changed the dimensions of that uh on two lots on there, was that a unanimous vote? Then by the board, change the dimensions on that?
It was, so it was stated uh that the board, the P and Z body wanted. My discretion to come up with an idea to present to you on the width of the larger frontage, their motivation. Was, you know, this seventy six. Land, and again, they they looked at this. And saw that this twenty seven thirty eight could be used and taken out along with this sixty seven rather than taking some of seventy six.
But if it's not producing good crops anyway, I mean.
Yeah, I didn't have this informa, I I didn't think about taking that information and hand it to them at that zoning.
Yeah, Neil brought that into me last. That's when I forwarded to you guys.
I'm my third printer now, I got it.
So you're kind of thinking that that. Running just made wider fronting, just gonna kind of make the lots more undesirable. Or something to purchase.
The feedback, we, the feedback I got on the one person that may be interested is that he would like to be as far back as he could get. So therefore, I just wanted to go back to the way I had it originally. Therefore, the map kind of helped that.
Justify that. Feedback in the public out here.
Yeah, if anything else there?
Um, I I was just gonna reiterate, we did not have. Soil maps or we have a soil mass, we did not have production maps. My opinion is that armor saying that us would have looked at that a little differently than what we did.
Understandable.
But, you know, and with what we had in front of us, that was the facts that we had and. That's why we made our decision at that point, we did not have these maps. I would say these have been pretty good facts.
I don't have anything else, I'd make a motion to close the public hearing if there's no more input.
Yeah, first.
Second.
First and second, all in favor? Public hearing is closed.
Make a motion to go. There are basically no additions that the P and Z wanted on there, but other than they wanted to change that lot size.
Um, we we did have the uh. That the minor platinum, the major subdivision would be followed, and again, we would do it just like they're doing with Dan Hoover. When it gets to be above beyond three, we would split to the uh major subdivision process. And then it was also a limit to six cow calf pairs or two large animal. Which is a little bit of discretion um or.
And if you've got.
Interpretation with that.
Yeah, if you've got good fence. And most of the stuff stays in the barn. All, you know. That makes any difference to anybody. But it's the fence.
Right, the access to the farmland, is that gonna be brought in?
We have it.
This gets developed.
There's a driveway. Right here. Right now. And I guess we just wait and see if someone is interested in it or otherwise we'd add another driveway to the south.
So I have a motion. To approve with conditions that the minor plat major subdivision process will be followed, plus animal MSP place, I need to establish H two lot. Do you have a second?
I have a second.
All right, all in favor? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Doug, you want to type that up? Doug, you want to sign this?
Thank you.
That would be worse.
All right, shall we go back to the Home Industry Permit for Midwest Custom Resaw LLC?
I think Dakota was gonna speak and how he thought was gonna affect his, because he lives straight directly across the road. So he'd mostly want to be mostly affected by it.
Yes, I was just gonna mention.
You want to give your name and.
Yeah. Dakota Drish seventeen thirty two Indiana Avenue, Independence, Iowa. Now, I didn't come here to actually speak today, um I do want to thank you guys for giving me an opportunity to speak, I wanted to thank Blake Mark for reaching out to me. As well as Chad Beatty for taking the time to talk to me on the phone. I'm not actually here in support of Mr. Hill or Jesse, I'm not in here in objection to either one either. Um, quite frankly, this way, the way that it's currently sitting doesn't. Uh, really negatively affect Amy and I all that well, the reason I did want to come today was to make sure that I could speak on my own behalf if I needed to, so. Um, I did reach out to Chad, so originally when this started, Mr. Hill reached out to me. Um, with his concerns of what had been happening over the last year and a half or two years. Uh, my wife Jamie and I have only lived there for two years, so we're fairly new residents to the area as well. Um, this sawmill was not taking place when we moved in, however, with that being said, Jesse and Lori have been phenomenal neighbors. Um, we get along with them very well, we stop over and we talk with, talk with them. Um, I want them to be successful uh with whatever they're wanting and desiring to do as well. Um, with that being said, there is a home industry permit process, which I was aware of, I had applied and received. Uh, one of those myself, and so my main concern wasn't necessarily with where it's at right now. Um, it's where that it potentially could grow to, like how the lark did it was gonna grow. And what that was gonna consist of as far as the traffic on the gravel road, you know, we ended up with forty, fifty, sixty thousand. You know, we ended up with forty, fifty, sixty thousand pounds semi running up and down the gravel road. The damage that that was gonna cause. Uh, the additional dust and just the, the additional hassle, if you will, that may come with that. Currently, uh, Jesse's operation's been very small, uh, and very manageable. The noise, we've got a bunch of white pine trees that line the gravel road. The noise has not affected us, um, has not been a concern of mine. Um, and it sounds like there's even been some mufflers and additional, uh, remedies put in place already to accommodate for that, so. Um, really, like I said, I just wanted to address the, the board, um, not really in support or, uh, against. Any of the conflicts that may be between Mr. Hill and Jesse. Uh, and I also wanted Jesse to know that, um, that he's been a good neighbor and we're not gonna have neighborly conflicts between Jesse, Jesse and us. Um, I think that Jesse will be receptive enough that if there is issues that we're having, that I could stop over and talk to him and he'd be receptive to that. Um, I do appreciate the effort you guys have put in to zoning ordinances and the, the regulations that go with that. Um, to make sure that we can, with this home industry permit, it's my understanding that we, we could review that annually. So if it ever did get to the point that it was getting out of hand, so to speak, um, then we would have a little bit of checks and balances with that. That's the main thing I wanted to express. Do you guys have any concerns or questions for me at all?
Yeah, I just got a question and it's not to this here. Uh, with your, your permit that you would have and stuff like that, when people make purchases with you and stuff like that. Uh, is, is there firearms discharging noise from your property over there?
No, and I discussed that with Chad. That wasn't gonna be, that was not gonna be something we were gonna authorize or allow there. In fact, the, the fitness that I have there is a, it's a recreational business. So, um, it's not gonna be anything that's gonna be increasing really the flow of traffic or anything like that. Uh, they did talk a little bit about, and I understand the aesthetic value. I mean, I certainly can empathize, um, with that. Uh, Mr. Hill brought that to my attention as far as reducing property values or anything without, that effect, and I, I can certainly empathize and understand that as well. Um, it's Amy and I, my wife's name is Amy. It's our opinion that, uh, I don't want to interfere with Jesse or Lori and what they want to do on their property. So if they want to stack logs in front of their, definitely learn, uh, more power to them. I do like the idea that the, uh, evaluation either talks about a twenty five or a fifty log limit. I do like that there's potentially a limit there so that we don't have, um, logs stacked in the road ditches and up and down, you know, up and down the gravel road. Originally, when this happened, Mr. Hill was also logging walnut trees out of his property. And so there was a large stack of walnut trees in the road ditch, um, that was sitting there. And originally I thought that was part of this operation. And I asked Mr. Hill about that when he came to my house and confronted me about this. And, uh, he said, no, those were his logs that he was having logged. So aside from that, Jesse's been keeping the logs on his property. Hasn't really been as much of an issue for us, so.
All right. Well, thanks very much Dakota. Appreciate that input.
Original condition.
Jesse, uh, are you still in favor, uh, of completing what your counter offer was? Back, um, fifty log limit and the insulation and the dates that you're, you countered back to Chad with. Are you still in agreement of doing them?
What was the, what was the counter offers?
So it was go from twenty five to fifty and the, and, uh.
So the frame, the frame indoor to the north would be left as is. The insulation northeast by, my proposal was September thirty of twenty twenty four. His counter was insulated by December thirty first, twenty twenty four. So it'd be by the end of the year, it's basically three more months. And then insulate the balance of the building. My proposal was March first, twenty twenty five. This proposal was by November first, twenty twenty.
And the changes that, on the dates there that you put in, is that because of, uh, being able to, uh. Being able to finance the installation project and giving you enough time to do it? Is that both? Is that correct? I just figured they'd give you more time to get it done.
So, um. The frame in the steel dividing door to the north, why don't you want to do that? I mean, it, it seems like that would cut down on some noise potentially to Mr. Hill and that, that might appease him.
Well, my point is I like to practice just, uh, what, just to get a little air going through it.
Okay.
That would kind of, doesn't get too hot or.
Yeah, otherwise it'd be stifling. Thank you.
Yeah, we spring up the point about the insulation. What, what is the basis for the insulation and, and where are we kind of? Where, where is that coming from? We want to see authorization for that.
The insulation.
And was soundproofing, I think.
Yeah.
Soundproofing, but what's the best? Well, I mean, from what I've heard and scrapped earlier, there's not a lot of, uh, vessels. To the nature of the property at this point, we put them off the run as well. Uh, my, my concern in, in the insulation is that I've worked at the sawmill, especially if you've got a gas engine in there, it gets, it's hot pretty quick. So wouldn't want anybody falling out in the middle of the summer.
Well, the thing about the insulation's not gonna change the exhaust noise because the exhaust is already coming out the side of the building. It's, it's just the saw blade noise and I. Say the truth, I, I wish I'd had a decimal meter with me out there. Which I think commonly needs purchase.
But which I could show you, there's, there's apps that you can use on your phone. Let me have to show you that. Um, but I, I'm more, more worried about the heat because even in the winter, those, those sawmills will heat up, right?
Yeah, I agree with that.
Yeah.
And you got the engine heat.
Yes, that's exactly it.
I moved one of that door way to.
Right. So in my experience of working on sawmills, I've rarely seen insulation under a building.
As far as the heat is, yeah.
Oh, so the, the insulation, you know, some of the, that you're referencing, um, doesn't have two or three. Uh, residents in close proximity, number one. So with my construction background, insulation, soundproofing is, is, you know, whether it's between a laundry room and a master bedroom. Or, you know.
Right.
Bathroom, the living room, you know, that's one of the potentials that can help. Um, as far as the door issue, um, from what I was told, and again, I don't know this, but. From Mr. Hill, maybe Jesse can, uh, confirm or deny this. That originally when the property was purchased, that the door to the north was not there. And then the door was cut open later. Is that correct, Jesse? So one thing too with the way that, and Clayton can confirm this, the way that the saw drops, has its droppings. It could potentially damage the north interior part of that building, I think, depending on the number that he runs through there. Some of those droppings, if that door wasn't able to come open, it could potentially damage the interior. And again, that was just one of my, um, ideas to make everybody get along. Because of that pathway through these trees that could potentially, you know, move towards Mr. Hill's property.
But what is the basis of the insulation? Is there, is there an OSHA requirement or is this just, that like you said, maybe an appeasement effort?
Yeah, just solid insulation.
Yeah.
Yeah, I would, I would venture to guess that you're getting more soundproofing from, uh, from the trees and everything. Than you would from any insulation you give them both.
And then you got.
That's just my own thought.
Yeah, and then you gotta take into consideration, um, when the leaves are gone. And, and, and again, decimal meter is great, but until we have an actual, the, the Board of Health would have to. Research counties, just like our win, right? It's gonna take some time. I need, and we did this back in my first tenure with now McMartin headed that up. In regards to noise and air and everything, and potentially adopting a, uh. A noise ordinance per se with the number of decibels for every single noise.
Okay.
Um, you're gonna probably need ordinance rewrite, it's gonna cost you money. Uh, not that we don't need it. And then you're gonna probably need staff because every single call that comes in, whether it's. Denali's with a, a band at eleven o'clock or, you know, the, the races and all of a sudden. You become monitoring everything.
Well, you know, we got. You, when you live out in the egg community, you got all kinds of noises going on. I mean, equipment running, the engines running, I mean. There's just a lot of activity going out there in the egg community and stuff like that. And I, I, there's several areas out there. In our county that I've heard complaints about. The biggest one has been the, the grain dryer. Fans and stuff like that. Uh, I mean, them things run, they start them up, they run them spring and fall or whenever the moisture is such that they have to. Run them for the storage of the corn or soybeans. And there's nothing out there in an ordinance that's gonna stop that. I mean. I had one family was having trouble with their children sleeping at night because the, the grain dryer is running and stuff and, but there's nothing to. Stop that, uh, out there in North Aquoski on that first curb when you cross the bridge. We got development, a lot of houses there and, uh, and that, uh. Them grain dryers and, uh, blowers run there all the time. We have houses, uh, right across the road from it. And I've never heard any complaints from them people about them running. They're quite noisy.
And again, just to confirm, if this was a, uh, property that was in a industrial, commercial type setting. I would not recommend these restrictions, right? That property is rezoned for that. We know it's coming. This is, this is sort of a unique situation where there's three residences and. I didn't even know that the sawmill existed until we took the complaint call. And, and so then that's when I went out and, and researched it.
But if we, if the north side. Is insulated and then the doors open to ventilation and, or because of the way the slabs come off of the end of the saw and stuff like that. Uh, you're defeating your purpose when you got the door open if you got the insulation done.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
And this may be something, this was something that just came to my mind when Mr. Hill expressed his concern to me about the noise. And expressed that him and his wife had recently retired and now they're home all day and so they're listening to this noise. Um, and this may not be something that would be acceptable for Jesse, but something that immediately came to my mind is I wonder if there's. You know, a, a wall or like a barrier that they could build. To help with the issue that would be similar to like the noise barriers along Highway twenty over at Waterloo. And I would think like from Jesse's perspective, that would be a pretty easy potential compromise to where he could leave his door wide open. But he could have a wall set back. I don't know if he has the property line to do it, but he could have a wall set back that's the height of the door. That still allows the ventilation, still allows all of that, but is a insulated exterior wall that buffers, is a sound buffer for Mr. Hill. I don't know if that's even an option or not, but.
Or even plant some trees.
I was gonna say, why doesn't Mr. Hill plant some, uh, a row of our?
There is trees there.
Mr. Hill could build a wall there by himself.
I mean, if, I mean, if Jesse doesn't have the property.
Do it, right?
Yeah, so. What, what we know about that building that's been built there obviously before the property was purchased in there a while, so, um. The ordinance allows four feet. From what I can tell, it's three foot plus or minus, again. Without a survey being done, actually, I read, yeah, so. Uh, there'd have to probably be an agreement with the fence or any type of structure there that, you know, it's on the property line. And it's away from building three foot plus or minus, but that, that is something that I thought of. But I didn't, I didn't propose it because of my concern on the property line situation.
I'm not concerned about this. Way understood, we just come up as a. Issue. He did not confront Jesse himself. He confronted Jesse's wife and she looked at her head. So I just wondered if he could enforce that if Mr. Hill has more problems come to Jesse in central.
Understood.
On the other option would be Mr. Hill built a fence on his property in his expense. But that would. Probably not be all received on his end.
No, uh, because he's not the one that's constructing the sawmill operation. But I, I like that idea. That's a very good thought to consider. That sound barrier wall, it must work because you see it put along highways all over.
Well, I just noticed the difference. My evergreens are evergreen all year round, whereas he has trees that shed their leaves. And I think it does make a difference, but, uh, we just don't notice the noise as much at our property and we're closer. As you had mentioned, mentioned, like when you were out there, we're right across the road.
I live across attraction, across the street from train tracks and I can't ask a train to stop. I mean, it's just stuff you put up with.
There's the train tracks built before your house.
What's your thoughts on? Plant some trees along there or do a north barrier wall. What's your thoughts on that? Did you rather do the insulating, but there again, by doing the insulating and opening up the door, you're defeating the purpose.
I mean, it's not impossible. Through the wall and tree, I just, on my property, I don't have much room to plant trees.
Right.
But there is, there's room on his property.
Well, I'm gonna offer a suggestion. Would it be something that if you offered to supply the trees and plant them on his. Side of the property line? And do like arbor by, it's something that's fast growing, that is year-round green. That would help maybe soundproof it.
Yeah.
Where you guys could maybe work out a compromise, you know, he lets you plant them on his land.
But the thing about it is that's. There'd have to be some clearing down there. I mean, you can't just go out, plant trees, little trees and where there's a lot of trees already, they're just not gonna grow.
I guess my, my point of this is that we seem to be putting additional restrictions on this potential business owner. Uh, but we already have legal instruments in place with nuisance complaints and things like that to actually mitigate these problems even after the fact. And I realize that everybody's coming into this conversation with their hearts in their sleeves and they want to make sure that every neighbor is the happiest, but. Um, maybe reconsider how many, how many limitations we've put on this new business.
I'd rather attack it ahead of time than after the fact. It's kind of like the wind turbine ordinance that we just had to struggle through. We're trying to appease a whole lot of people and we want everybody to live and work together. And I think if, if we don't do our diligence on trying to make these workable. You're creating a lot of families working against other families and a lot of hard feelings and. We're trying to appease it before it ever happens. That's my opinion.
I would actually not like to see trees at the north end of that building because when you do open up the door to get a little bit of air, the trees are gonna block the air that you do get.
Just the, the wall would do the same thing.
I think you had something more.
That was the one thing I wanted to point out on Jesse's behalf is if, I think that it was expressed to Clayton. You know, if they approved the home industry permit today, but then it's too lax. And then a year or two years from now, the board received complaints and wanted to try to pull back. I think that would be more difficult. Um, because Jesse may have already invested the time and the resources and, you know, the money into whatever was already approved today. I think it would be harder to pull back if Mr. Hill had an issue, you know, later. So that would be my only concern with not establishing the, you know, whatever restrictions need to be in place for today.
So. Within a year and a half, then you would have these, the walls insulated?
Sad.
So within a year and a half, you would have all the walls insulated? Do we, what are our home industry permits? How, are they like just annual or?
Annual.
Just talking the north and the east.
What, the east wall by December?
North and east.
Yeah.
And in the ba- balance, the balance of the building would be, meaning attic and all the walls by. November first, twenty twenty five.
I'm inclined to say just do the north and east and leave the other ones alone. Just to cut down on the heat buildup. Cause I can, I could be empathetic to that. Old and fat and I sweat.
Well, part, part of the reason too with the, uh, insulating was when the muffler, when I was out there was inside, right? So the, the echoing of that, now that is exiting the building to the east. And so that's obviously helping. Mr. Hill's even confirmed that to me with a phone call, that it's been better since I was out there the first time. That was part of the process too of the insulation.
And that was probably, Mr. Hill's not spoke to you since that larger muffler was put on either.
Yeah, he did. Yeah, he, he could be, I'm not sure. Yeah, he did. Yeah, he he could be, I'm not sure about the larger muffler, but he called last week to confirm that. Um the noise is much better than it was at the first.
Does that make more sound than a common art farm tractor? Old John Deere.
Similar, you know, just you get the surging when he's uh. Running the unit back and forth to travel, and actually, when you're running the blade, that doesn't put much load on the. It's when you're actually running it back and forth on the track.
Similar to uh when the PTO goes into.
And it lugs down the. Cause a forty twenty is like ninety horsepower, isn't it, John Deere? Not even that much.
What we're at right now is annual evaluation, limit of fifty logs if we go. With the increase in logs, um the exhaust has already been.
It's already done.
That's already done. And then insulate north and east walls of building by December thirty first? Is that what I'm hearing? That's what I'm, is that what I'm hearing from everybody?
But why insulate the east wall if the the neighbor to the east doesn't have any problem?
I was gonna point, I was gonna point that out, we're not having an issue with sound, so if you wanted to cut down on that.
Just go to the north.
Just go to the north, yes.
It works for me, is that work for you, Jesse?
And it's got one more, that that door in the north end. I don't, I used to open it pretty much all the way, but since this, everything I just. Felt bad about it, so now I I open it a lot of wood, so it's not that the door is ever wide open and cut.
Okay. Yeah, we scratched up from the list.
Yeah, we'll take that frame and off. Eliminate the insulation of the entire building, right?
Yep.
Right.
Like a annual evaluation, fifty logs, um insulate north walls. By December thirty first, and agreement if the operation grows by more than part-time venture, the owner will consider moving the facility to another location. You're good with that? Are you guys good with that?
Just to confirm, we're scratching the east wall, just go north wall.
Yes, yep.
And we're scratching the entire insulation, you just need the north wall.
Right.
Good, someone agree with you to Jesse?
Just like to say a little bit about the limit on logs. Did you ever see a sawmill in business fifty bucks? A lot of them are five hundred to a thousand. And I think he's. He's waiting, he's trying to make his, I think that should be more than that.
You're kind of running a custom business there, as you're able to do it, you're you're custom and part-time. So you're bringing logs in as you've got time to have them delivered and work with them. You're not using this for a storage facility. As as you've got time to do these custom sawing, you're having that customer bring them logs in, is that correct?
I do, I do have some, there's about. Oh, about forty of them there, my own logs. Just if somebody orders something, that way I got the wood there to cut.
People can't follow it till the end.
Well, and I guess that brings me back to my question again. If you were to have five hundred logs, where are you gonna store them at?
Can, there's room to make, you can file a law.
Then there's.
Instead of thousands.
He was just saying, like his other song.
I'm just afraid it's gonna be a lot more than fifty eventually.
Yeah, well, and that, to me, that would be the glory of being able to have this home industry. Home industry permit, because then we could reevaluate next year, and you know, maybe we're. Mister Hill's okay with what's going on, if traffic isn't too excessive, and maybe we could bump it up to a hundred logs or seventy-five or increase. As opposed to trying to pull back.
Right, it's it's easier to increase than it is to decrease, absolutely.
A year, I found out a year rolls around really fast for that renewal.
Yeah, yeah.
Have a motion?
Okay, I have a motion that we go ahead and approve that with, and re-reading that.
Got it?
Okay, uh prove that permit uh with the annual evaluation as. Inspection prior to renewal, limit of fifty logs. Uh insulate the north wall by December thirty first. And if operation uh grows, that you'll pursue moving to a different location.
I'd second that.
Right, I have a first and a second, all in favor? Motion carries.
Chris, do you need any others?
I'm, I'm just gonna have it.
Okay.
Right, so next up would be. Public comment.
I had a question, um in public comments, maybe I can answer your question. Public comments, there's public comments, but I was just curious about the event. Um that was potentially gonna take place outside of town. Um where are we at on that, that, or I guess if I need to ask it another time, I can.
Answer that, we got an upcoming meeting. Public meetings, enough to cast.
So there's a Board of Adjustment meeting on Wednesday night, and that topic will be discussed by that. Fourth, five month Board of Adjustment, make a decision, we've given the all the information. Spoken to the applicants and and the group two or three times last week in regards to them presenting. Answering as many questions as possible, one of the uh. Items too was plenty that brought up the potential uh liability insurance, insurance potentially. Adding Buchanan County as an additional insured, if the event. Uh that event is in the, I think, the twenty third, twenty twenty fifth, August, August, yes. So us, um as far as our department and the board, I believe, are finding. More and more out as the weeks progress, days progress, and I know that applicants did have a. Long conversation with Scott Podinsky, and they were also scheduled to speak with Rick Wolf Call on Friday afternoon. The upcoming day of the last.
Last Friday. I've not had a chance to talk with Rick in regards to all those uh. Topics that were discussed, but if I find out, I can definitely reach out.
Seven o'clock into that.
Thanks.
Management, thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Congratulations on your new business.
Thank you. Is my grand job.
Yeah, yeah, we'll we'll get you some mail, and then if you get any questions when you get a call.
Thanks.
Also that meeting, John was mentioning, it's uh Wednesday night, seven P M, at the old Red Bell.
And and we are not affected in any way, because you know, we're in Brandon, so that, mine is just a full curiosity question. Um first of all is why, I know I love curiosity questions, such as a human or a cat, right? Um first of all is why did this go, because I don't know, why did this go before the Board of Adjustment, not here? And second of all, um I noticed that on the Board of Adjustment, they're going to apply for a permit, but they're already selling tickets. So, I again, just a curiosity question to me, I'm just, how do you do that without even having the permit? Okay.
A sought forgiveness versus permission to begin with. They just decided they were gonna do this, and then all of a sudden, it started getting some pushback, and then it got. Brought to us and it's.
What, three weeks ago, a month ago, and I had not even, I'd not heard a thing about it, and so within our ordinances, there's no actual. Temporary permits given anymore, so the only way to permit an event like this that is defined in our ordinance would be go and ask for a special exemption permit. Because this land is in the eight one district, that with the uh process procedures goes. Goes in front of the Board of Adjustment for those special exemption permits.
Okay, thank you. They're following the proper channels, they're just partying, late getting.
Right, they're always selling tickets right now.
That's, that's their.
So did, what are, did our older ordinances include that?
We had the ability to write temporary permits.
Is there, it sounds like our old, like our old ordinances were a little bit more.
We adopted the one in twenty twenty, so that's my two cents. I mean, it's no different than the thing I give you today, there's a lot more um guidance and uh. More fine print, no different than a building, I battled this right now with the, within the R one subdivision. Ordinance, which is mostly your uh. Kurt Mark subdivision, Sandbook subdivision, those are R one pipes. In the new twenty twenty ordinance, I battled this all the time with contractors calling me, there's a stipulation and a height restriction of eighteen foot. On any accessory building. Well, a lot of people own campers and boats, and they wanna have a, or a pontoon, and they wanna have doors that are twelve or fourteen foot high. Well, if you put a twelve or fourteen foot high overhead door, and you don't vault your trusses. Um you need a roof that is maybe at least twenty foot six with four twelve inch, so I battled that a lot. For ordinance, um you would need to go and ask for variance, I mean, those are just, those are a few things, along with the number of animals. It was just written out right there, where we knew, move forward, and the process was much quicker.
So our only option is to grant a variance or change your.
And then CSR levels, you know, we talk about that a lot, but when I was here before, up until twenty twenty. If fifty percent of that lot that was being applied for was fifty-five CSR or less, I had the authorization to move forward. Process was quicker, the resident was happier, we had less board meetings, less publication notices, less cost of the county, so. You know, those are just a handful of things that we do.
So we could just like totally go back to the old ordinances and get rid of these?
Some some counties don't have ordinances.
We did find that out.
And there is a provision or allowing special uses. In an egg one like that for music festivals and.
Correct, and tourism.
So that'll be what they're looking at.
And obviously, there's gonna be a whole lot of emotion that comes within the comments, and the board is gonna have to uh, you know. Dissect and make a decision, yeah, like I shared with you in the email, I feel that. Even though the cart is ahead of the horse, you know, like you stated. Uh we need to try to plan and work with this as much as possible, otherwise we go into. Chasing a small amount of money with potential fees for three day and. With their, whether that's right or wrong, I mean, that's really our, the option.
I I admire their ambition, it's just the. Most of these events start a whole year out, planning and.
Any other public comments?
Recently, I noticed that, you know, going online, you haven't been able to find the B O S agendas, usually. Uh not much later than Friday, but a few times now, we haven't been able to uh. Find the agenda of B O S meetings.
Well, there's one Monday we didn't have a meeting because.
Right, and we didn't know that either, we shut up for here, we said, sorry, we didn't even know that it wasn't gonna be a meeting, but nice to know that.
Yeah, we had a cash count that.
I can put you on the email list, so every day, for every time an agenda is emailed out.
Hey, see you, thanks.
You got a deal there. Okay, thank you.
Love them in the public's interest.
Is there anything else?
Yeah, I have something. Our fireworks ordinance.
Is there one?
It's not being, as far as I'm concerned, I'll just get rid of it. Because I think we've had, what, two or three applications, and starting last Wednesday night up until last night. There was fireworks going off all the time, and I think people are just putting. Thumb in their nose at the ordinance and.
For the past few years, we've only had maybe two.
Yeah.
People apply for the fireworks permit. The biggest problem is is when the state changed their laws. That you can purchase them and you can set them off, that's all anybody thinks of. They don't understand the fact that county has their own ordinance, most cities have their own ordinance. And in order for law enforcement to try and track these down, it's impossible.
Yeah, you can't. By the time they start to go into one, that there's somebody setting them up in the other direction.
Yeah, I'm just saying that it's kind of a situation where.
In the study is, it is, it's in the county.
Yep, I don't think it matters which city.
There's certain time they can't shoot them off, like ten P M or something.
It's only supposed to be from nine to eleven, I think, or.
Oh, that's what we had.
Nine to ten.
And there's date restrictions on the state one, but I don't recall what they are, I don't know.
It was from like July or June thirtieth or July first through the ninth.
It's motion to adjourn.
First, I got a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, meeting's adjourned.
Thanks, everybody.